Other than the infrastructure costs, otherwise you have economies of scale. That one million dollar expansion.
Better than if it was like three.
Something Miami can handle.
And now we get to weed through.
I hope he's trying to be digital.
Wow, look at you, impressed.
See?
It's like doing CPR to the owner from the side to stop him because people know it's heartbreaking, you know? Have both things.
Hey, Jessica, could you send us the PowerPoint?
Yeah.
Is that all?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Actually, it's in public access.
There is a password, though.
Yeah. Yeah, and it was, I wonder if I can share it with you. Maybe.
Okay, got it. No, that worked. I think I did have it.
Oh, great.
Yeah.
Like to call the meeting back to order and thank you all for your patience. And we will begin with the roll call for the third time.
Ms. Franklin.
Here.
Ms. French.
Here.
Mr. Bracken.
Here.
Ms. Ragoo.
Here.
Mr. Petheridge.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Ms. Snidely.
Here.
All right, we will do a pledge of allegiance. If you'd like to join us, you're welcome to.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And thank you very much. And our first item is a public hearing on the 2026 tax budget. And Heidi is here. And I need a motion to open the public hearing.
Can we first have a motion to approve the agenda?
Approve the agenda.
Oh, did I miss that?
Yeah.
I sure did. That's why we have a good clerk of counsel right now. I would like a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of the agenda indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Now we'll go, thank you. Now we'll go to the public hearing. Can I have a motion to open it?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. And Heidi?
If there's any public comment or any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
That's what you really gotta say.
You got me right.
All right. So if anyone would like to comment on the annual, can you just tell people what this is? Because this is not our specific operating budget.
Correct. This is just the preliminary, it's kind of a first look glance at the 2026 operating budget. And we are required to submit this to the county as a very preliminary estimate. And then once the tax budget is approved, if the tax budget is approved tonight, we will send that on to the county. And then we will begin our regular budgeting process in July and August of this year.
Thank you. So for people's information, we do this every year. And it's, the actual decisions that we make about our operating budget and our capital budget are done at a later time.
Yes.
Is there anyone who would like to comment on the tax budget for the year? Okay, can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And then we have a public hearing on Sustainable Ohio Public Energy Council. We have Rena here, and I need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, thank you. Hi, Rena.
Hi, everyone.
So talk to us about this.
Yes, so as you guys know, Oxford has an active electric aggregation program. And at the end of our last contract, there was a call from council to explore other alternatives to aggregate with and possible other models from our current broker model. Through that exploration, we found Sopac. And I will actually give it away to them soon to share more about their organization. But this is a way to continue our aggregation program while strategically aligning with some of our sustainability goals. I can share more about that in the resolution part. But for now, I want to pass it off to Luke and Jennifer with Sopac to share more about their plan of operations.
Okay. So we just ask you to introduce yourself and generally where you live.
Absolutely. My name is Phil Leplu. I am our deputy director and general counsel for Sopac. And I live in Germantown, Ohio, so just up the road from you all.
Thank you.
I've got a little bit of a presentation for you all that I can run through. Okay, so this is the second of two required public hearings for the electric plan of operation governance for Sopac. As Rena just mentioned, this is for, you have an active electric aggregation program currently that runs through December of 2025. So this program would pick up January on order. So I will get into it. So a little bit about Sopac or Sustainable Ohio Public Energy Council. We are a regional council of governments organized under chapter 167 of the Ohio revised code. We actually have member communities as members, but we also have political subdivisions such as Metro Parks of Butler County, Five Rivers Metro Parks, and Dayton Public Library, among some others. We are literally governed by the members we serve. So every single member of Sopac has one seat on our general assembly. Then we also have a board of directors, which is made up of 15 seats, the five largest population communities, five at-large seats, and then five regional. So we have one member from each area of the state in that board of directors as well. We operate as a shared energy office. So we have shared administrative, financial, grant writing, legal services, and we provide those to our communities to help them achieve their sustainability and energy goals, whatever those may be. What makes us a little bit different as well is all of our member communities with electric aggregation programs have 100% renewable energy by default. So we're very proud of that, and we've been able to do that all while saving our communities' money as well. So it's one win. We are now up to, as I stand here today, 43 members. That involves the city of Athens, Cleveland, Dayton, Gehanna, Upper Arlington, Harmcliff, Riverside over in the Dayton area, and then on the political subdivision side, Dayton Metro Library, Five Rivers Metro Parks, and others to, more in that list as well. Our newest member being Huber Heights in the Dayton area. That number is set to grow here by the end of the summer. We have multiple other communities and political subdivisions going through their process to join us as well. So what that means is greater collective buying power in our aggregation program, which is a really good thing, good thing for our communities. We are AEP Energy's second largest customer in Ohio, behind only the Columbus aggregation program. And right now, this number's approaching closer to 1.5 terawatt hours, but for now we'll call it over 1.2 terawatt hours of annual electric load. That is just on the aggregation side. We also have our public pricing program, which is utilized by our other political subdivisions that I referenced, but also governmental buildings for some of our communities. Our mission is to provide simple, valuable, and reliable public energy programs to help our members achieve their local energy and sustainability goals. And like I said, it's not one size fits all. We work closely with our members to see what their goals are and what they want to achieve. And lastly, we are government as well, just like you all. So we are subject to public credit requests, sunshine laws, and we're audited every two years. So we believe very strongly in transparency as well. Okay, so I won't belabor this point because you guys have an active electric aggregation program, so I'm sure you all know how it works. But if you look at the representation up on the screen, this left bucket out of the three, here is the supply portion, we'll call it, on your bill. So what we're able to control with electric aggregation is you're able to lock in a new supply rate and basically make it your new default rate for your community instead of the standard service offer from the local utility. So that allows you to have, you know, more local control, competitive pricing, and also do things like make your default 100% renewable energy. So that's kind of what aggregation controls. The middle bucket is the local utility still handles the delivery, the maintenance of the lines, the reliability, making sure that there's no brown outs, black outs, that sort of thing, that remains with the local utility. So that is not something that whoever you pick for aggregation controls. And then lastly, the customers who actually receives that power and those benefits of the aggregation program. So as I mentioned earlier, we have to have two public hearings as part of the plan of operation governance. No matter what, you know, what you're doing with the program, you have to have a plan in place first by statute. This is the second of the two public hearings. And just to point out the other part of the Ohio revised code, you have to put it in the newspaper, the public notice, which has been accomplished here as well. So getting a little more into the plan, and I will warn, it is a very dry document. It's not super exciting, so I'm going to kind of just give you guys the highlights. But it is posted on our website. You can also get it here at City Hall. But the plan of operation governance is the plan that is utilized by our current members and our future members. It is already certified and approved by the PUCO, the Public Utilities Commission of Ohio. And you're able to use our certificate in this plan without having to reinvent the wheel. So tried and true, and works very well. The plan contains structure, governance, operations, management, funding, and policies for the program. Little bit about the description and goals of the opt-out electric aggregation program. Participation is voluntary. So you will get a letter in the mail as residents and small businesses that are eligible for the program, and they will have the opportunity to opt out of the program and basically decline the service. If they do so, it leaves those individuals with the standard service offer and the local utility. They're also absolutely free to shop apples to apples and that kind of thing. One of the other goals of the program, as I sort of mentioned earlier, is to leverage this bulk buying power and to hopefully, you know, get more competitive rates and those sorts of things. Mentioned earlier as well, to secure clean and sustainable sources of power, then the reliability of customer service. Speak about that as well. AEP Energy has a call center that's based in Columbus, Ohio, that, we have a 1-800 number, they pick it up. It is dedicated specifically to the Sopac electric aggregation program. So when they pick up the line, they know who's calling. It's somebody in one of our programs. So very proud of that. And lastly, to advance whatever the community's economic and energy development goals are. So working to build out whatever the goals are. Little bit about the price and program stability. This should go without saying, but we do like to make sure to say this, is that Sopac and AEP Energy are suppliers, have never terminated or canceled or suspended an aggregation program prior to completion of engagement or expiration to full term. That should go without saying, but we make sure, we want you all to know that. What the program utilizes typically is fixed term pricing for one to three years. So those are the options. Lately, we've been telling folks, you know, going on the shorter end of that is probably wise considering it's a very volatile energy market. So keeping it closer to that supply year, electric supply year, to be responsive to those movements in a commodity is wise right now. We closely watch energy markets on a daily basis, and we do receive daily pricing from AEP Energy. So we're able to watch exactly what's going on in real time. And it allows us to move quickly in a market and pick a good spot to lock rates. Lastly, we do pay very close attention to the local utility auctions so that we are aware of exactly where that standard service offer is going to be and make sure that we're staying, again, responsive to where that market's moving. Okay, so who can participate? So by statute and regulations state that it is residential and small commercial electricity accounts. Small commercial means under 700,000 KWH per year. And by statute, opt-out electric aggregation programs exclude PIP customers, anyone who's gone out and shopped for power, so apples to apples. They are excluded from the automatic opt-in, opt-out letter at the beginning. That's not to say they can't join the program at a later date if they choose to. Again, large industrial customers are not part of opt-out electric aggregation. And then anyone who chooses to opt out during that opt-out process is not part of the program then, of course. So how will that happen? Eligible residents and small businesses will receive these letters by mail. That initial opt-out period by statute is 21 days. That's not to say that's the only time you can opt out of the program. If you missed that 21-day window and you said, man, I wanted to opt out, day 22, you can still choose to do so. You just will be in the program for one meter read cycle until you, you know, get picked up in that meter read. We do not charge early termination fees, whether it's in the first 21 days or ever. We don't charge early termination fees. You can also come into the program for free at any time if you want. In theory, you could go in and out of the program multiple times if you really want to. So it's very flexible from that standpoint. This is a sample opt-out notice letter. We like folks to see this so that they know exactly what will be coming in the mail. We do like to work with our member communities to get their logo on this as well, so that it does look very official. We don't want people throwing it away in the trash, thinking it's junk mail. And then this is kind of what a sample opt-out letter looks like as well. Some communities too often like a picture too in that top right corner, just of whatever monument or whatever in the community. And we can do that with also the community's logo here to make it look very official. As you can see on, well, you might not be able to see because it's small, but it does have the rate, shows the term. It has three options of how someone can opt out if they choose to. They can fill it out by hand, mail it back in. They can call the 1-800 number and choose to do it that way, or they can even use a QR code and do that way. So we try to make it very flexible for folks if they don't want to be in the program, but hopefully they want to be in the program. So this also has frequent last questions that answers, you know, a lot of those questions that we do here a lot. And then it also comes with the terms and conditions page. But that is the highlights of the plan, and I'm happy to answer any questions you all might have.
I have one question.
Yes.
Everything sounds great.
Thank you.
I would say the biggest complaint that I hear from my constituents is confusion when they get all of these letters.
Right.
And they get one from Duke, they get them from all these other clean energy places who send them things, and they're confused on what they've got. And I think a lot of people don't even know whether they're in the aggregation program or not.
Yep.
In all of that, do you have a way to make it a little bit clearer for people?
We do. So number one, having the community's logo on it, I think, is one way to hopefully make it appear that this is not some kind of mailer that is trying to sell them something or whatever. It looks very official, hopefully. And so that's number one. Our director of public affairs and marketing does try to provide good communication to our members that they can put on their social media and also helps build out their electric aggregation website or their, the page on their website that hopefully, you know, provides more of that information so folks know what to expect. There's always going to be situations, you know, where somebody did not realize that it was, in fact, a more official piece of mail. So we're there to answer questions if that, those situations do arise. Whether it's our call center or myself or Jennifer here, who's our Southwest Director, we're there to hopefully be very responsive to those residents.
Other questions?
I guess I have one, and I think you would probably have an answer to this. I understand there's some added to the confusion, this is a college town, with people signing up and closing. You have multiple college towns in the network. And so how do you kind of anticipate? Because what we don't want people is to leave. We want people to be part of the aggregation program.
So we're very used to that.
Okay.
Your point, we have a lot of universities in our member communities. Athens being an example, I suppose. We know when students are moving back on campus and leaving and those sorts of things. So we do have refreshes throughout the year to capture when those students are coming back on so that they can get the benefit of this program as well. So that's something we're very used to. So no worries there. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
No problem.
And I'm going to open it up to the rest of the public, and we may call you back up.
No worries. Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this issue? And you just give us your name and we'll give you, and where you live, and we'll give you five minutes. Say whatever you want about this. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address it? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Motion to close public hearing?
Thank you very much. There's a motion to close. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, our next item is appointments to boards and commissions. I would recognize Councilor Petheridge.
So I move that, I'll read that, for the Board of Zoning Appeals, I move that we appoint Philip Russo to the Civil Rights Commission. I move that we appoint Roxanne Ornelas to the Environmental Commission. I move that we appoint Michael Vanny, Jim Finch, and Ken Vincent to the Historical Architectural and Preservation Commission. I move that we appoint Kelsey Strife, I apologize if I got her name wrong, to the House Advisory Commission, Jock Pitts, Nicola Rodriguez, and Mary Piper to the Planning Commission, Anne Kaufman Webster and Sean Rosenberg, to the Police Community Relations and Review Commission, Edra Southern and Fritzi Wellman, to the Recreation Board, Adam Weisel, to the Student Community Relations Commission, Matt Arbuckle, and to the McCullough Hyde Foundation, Karen Baker and Patrick Sidley.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Those individuals have been assigned to those different boards and commissions. There are still vacancies remaining. And so if you or someone you know is interested in serving the city, please have them look at the list online, and they can find out that there still are some vacancies on some of our boards and commissions.
And with gratitude to all who applied.
Absolutely.
And to all who were appointed, including those who are not yet, so.
Absolutely. All right. We will move then to public comments. And at this time, anyone wishing to address council about items that are not on the agenda or if they're on the consent agenda, this would be your opportunity. Come on forward and tell us your name and your address or where you live, and we'll give you five minutes. I recognize Sean.
Yes, hi, Sean Scott. I live on Foxfire Drive. As all of you know, I am the outgoing editor for the Oxford Free Press. So I wanted to take a couple minutes real quick to talk to you and just say, first of all, thank you to everyone on the city and also update you on the next steps for the Free Press. So just a little bit more in depth on the thank you. I started covering city council in the spring of 2021 with the Miami students, and it has been my favorite beat to cover since then, including with the student and with the Oxford Free Press. I think that this has been one of the greatest communities to learn about and do journalism. I think that a lot of times, local governments or government in general gets a kind of reputation regarding transparency and interaction with journalists. And my experience here has been, I can't think of a time where people turned down an interview request or were not forthcoming with information, and it has been a very, very good learning experience for me. When it came time to launch the Free Press last summer, I was not really sure what to expect in terms of community response. There aren't a lot of newspapers that are launching right now. There are a lot more that are closing down. And the press generally is not always the most popular, popular industry right now. So I wasn't sure what to expect from that. But the community response from everyone here, as well as just the community at large, has been phenomenal, and it has greatly exceeded my expectations. So thank you all for that. I really appreciate it. In terms of next steps, this is my last city council meeting personally. My last day with the Free Press is on June 27th. We have hired a new editor. His name is Aiden Cornu. A few of you have met him already. And I will have an update in this week's print edition as well. But he starts on July 16th, so there's going to be a little bit of a gap between the two of us. There will be no print editions on the Fourth of July or July 11th, and then we will return to print on July 18th. Several of you may still be hearing from our full-time reporting intern this semester, Catherine, as well as our copy editor, Taylor. They're both still going to be working over the next few weeks as we're between editors. So just, if you hear from them, please continue to respond to them. And then when Aiden comes on, he is coming to us, he was originally from Chicago, went to school at WVU, so he has a lot of college town experience but not Oxford experience yet. So I would just ask you all to be very generous with him in terms of helping him to better understand Oxford and learn more about the community. I'm very excited to have him on board. He's a much better photographer than I am, so I'm very excited about that. But I know that he will be very welcome here, as I have been, and thank you all again for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Sean. We appreciate it.
Can we give him a round of applause?
Counselors would like to say a word.
Yeah, I remember when I was running for council back in 2017, the Oxford Press was already in its downward, and people said, can't we do something about a new newspaper? And I optimistically believed it could potentially be true, but it, you know, I was trying to be pragmatic, and I never would have imagined that the community could launch such a quality newspaper so successfully. And it's only thanks to the amazing people who had the idea to do it. But to launch the paper for Sean to be the editor and the writer, writing like 60% of a weekly newspaper, was an amazing first hire for the Oxford Free Press. So thanks for all your contributions to the community as editor of the Miami Student. I don't know what government would be like if we didn't have good investigative journalism. Like, I don't know how anyone would know. So thank you.
Anyone else like to, before I do?
Yeah, I just really want to thank Sean for all his hard work. And when we did the interview a couple weeks ago, you reminded me that I had interviewed with you when I first ran in 2021. And it really was local, local news that calmed me down when I was really anxious and after January 6th and was doom scrolling late one night and looking at national news. And then something told me, just read the Oxford Observer and look at the Miami Student. And I just started reading about stuff that was happening here at home where I could see things and touch things. things and touch things and, and engage with people and it, it made a difference for me and it was part of what helped me feel like maybe I could run, like maybe I could do this. And so I really want to thank you. I want you, to wish you the best for what you are going to do next, which I think is in like Maine or New, yes. Okay, well, good luck and thank you.
Alex?
Yeah, I will go ahead and say now what I was going to say later. Sean, thank you. You were my first interview when I ran for council and it really helps set the tone for what it was like for me to talk to the press as an elected official. You have been at every event. I don't know how you find the hours of the day to be there for everything and our very fascinating council meetings, week after week.
Riveting.
Riveting, indeed. I, that's just in your role as editor in chief, which given the fact that you did that fresh out of college, you started a newspaper is incredible. So thank you for caring to graduate Miami and stay in Oxford. There aren't a ton of us who do that and it matters and we really appreciate you applying not just kind of your talent, but your award-winning talent, lest we forget Sean's won a ton of accolades for his time and work in reporting. In a very not creepy way, I see you walking to the post office to take the newspapers there. Your dedication to the community matters. It hasn't gone unnoticed and I think Maine is really lucky to have you and we're really sad to lose you. So thank you so much for just caring about this community that we all call home. You've faced a lot, you've dealt with a lot, you've dealt with a lot with grace that many adult human beings don't have. So thank you so much for your time and dedication to Oxford.
Anyone else? I want to just say congratulations on your new job. We will miss you and I think people have made that pretty clear. I've worked closely with Sean on a number of different things, including the distribution of the Oxford Free Press. I will say that Oxford was in a sad place for a long time, under the slow and painful, agonizing, slow death of the Oxford Press, which moved into a Sunday supplement and then a Sunday page and then a Sunday nothing. And everybody in the community that I ran into said, we gotta have a paperback. We, we just need that. There's no other way that we need communication in our community and little did we know how well it would be done. And I think that's a credit to you and I, I want to just give you full accolades. You've done a great job here and I, the people in Maine are very lucky. You're absolutely right and I have met Aiden and I think he'll do a wonderful job as well, but you know, you're our first and you're the first guy and you made it really a good process for us and I appreciate it very much.
Setting impossibly high standards for everybody to follow. It's going to be hard for anybody.
I really wanted to tell Aiden, I'm really sorry, but you're following somebody really good, which is not a good thing, you know? But I'm sure with your assistance and everybody else, he'll, he'll do fine, but good luck. We wish you well. Is there anyone else who would like to follow that up? Welcome.
My name is Brian Revere. I'm a resident of Oxford, Campus Avenue. Been in Oxford for two years now. I'm also the founder of One United, a new organization here in Oxford. I'm the gentleman who's putting together the Juneteenth Celebration here in Oxford, the very first annual Juneteenth Celebration. I come to ask today, but then to this process, I had to get a right of way and
That's on our agenda.
Oh, so do I need to sit down or do I
You're already here, we'll listen to you.
Okay, I apologize. Well, far as, I was coming again, far as with this right of way, to ask the council and the board if I would waive these fees to help me further to do this event, far as it's Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. And if y'all can do this for me, it would help greatly. Came out my own pocket through donations. I've been also able to help fund this project. Originally came to the council asking for $25,000 to sponsor this event. I later broke it down to a different budget of asking for a little under $7,000 due to timeframe from what I was told and I wasn't qualified for those monies. So I'm just asking if y'all can help me this way, it would be very appreciated.
Thank you, Brian. We appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address council on items that are not on tonight's agenda? If you do, if you would like to comment on something on the agenda, when it comes up, we'll make it available for you at that time. Okay, we will move then to the consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve it?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any items to be removed? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda is approved and we'll move to resolutions. You can read the first one.
A resolution authorizing the city of Oxford to enter into the Sustainable Ohio Public Energy Council, the execution and delivery of the agreement establishing SOPEC and approving the bylaws of SOPEC.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded.
It has my name on it, but I'm going to let Rena speak to this.
Okay, thank you. Hi Rena.
Hello. Thanks for having me back. So earlier you heard from SOPEC, sort of the legislative process regarding their aggregation plan. That is one of their core programs, but there's also a whole bunch of other stuff that they do that really aligns with our goals to become a more sustainable and resilient community. So I wanted to provide just a brief overview of the differences in their plan versus our current broker and model and then I'll share some of the other benefits of membership and how I see that being a strategic next step for us. So key differences between the plan is that we would be joining a council of governments rather than using a private broker. With that, SOPEC has an agreement to do a non-compete clause with AEP, although this does give us more bulk buying power of being in a non-compete and being with a, an aggregate of government. So it should be a tick in our favor for competitive rates. Additionally, they provide refreshes. This is really visible for us. We see the uptick in our aggregation participation and the downtick based on the move-in cycle, so that's very exciting. Additionally, the QR code. We get a lot of calls to our office trying to opt out that are going to the wrong place. Provides a great opportunity to educate on the aggregation program, but selfishly, if we can shuffle through QR code, I think that's good customer service for those who want to opt out as well. And then lastly, I did want to point out that SOPEC does have a higher administration fee than our current broker model. It is about $11 per year higher per customer, but with the last three years, all of our customer types, residential or commercial, have been saving over $100. I feel that because of the member benefits, that we, since we would still be saving money in comparison to Duke standard service option, that this slightly increased administrative fee may be worth it. That is for you guys to decide. In terms of benefits to membership, one is that SOPEC provides non-competitive community grants. If we were to join, based on our average meter participation, we can expect a ballpark of about $17,000 to $18,000 annually to support our sustainability goals. Additionally, they provide technical assistance on energy projects such as purchase power agreements at our closed municipal landfill. They provide collaboration opportunities with other municipalities. Recently, they were awarded a huge grant for EV charging infrastructure, essentially like if you want to drive from Dayton to Athens, where do we need to place chargers? And they worked with communities along that route to get it done and secure federal funding. Obviously, we have our EV charger funding now, but that's just an example of the collaboration we could participate in. And then lastly, we share a strategic goal of bringing renewable energy home to Ohio and home to our region. Admittedly, right now, SOPEC's 100% renewable energy is very similar to ours. It's very rec-based, but our current supplier does not have shared plans to bring generation close to home and we want that. SOPEC wants to bring it close to home for the jobs, for strengthening our regional grid. And you know, there's pride in being able to point to a solar panel and say like, that's going to Oxford. So with that, that's sort of my summary of SOPEC membership and the changes in our plan if we were to join.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Counselors, any questions or concerns? Are you ready?
Everything's wonderful. I think just the thing that we did talk about is the per kilowatt hour rate is basically the same as what we currently, like what do, because $11 is, is pretty negligible, but I'm sure the customer wants to know, does this going to change my electricity bill?
Yeah, that, that's a great question. So it is hard to estimate, estimate right now. I can say regardless of what supplier we go with, our energy rates will be going up. Duke standard service option right now is 10.45 cents per kilowatt hour. That is now three cents higher than our current aggregation rate, but that's not a fair comparison because we locked in, in August of 2023.
Okay.
So a few cities who have recently done their aggregation program, Cincinnati, or sorry, Dayton, they're a member of SOPEC. They also did some creative pricing metrics. They're at 8.71. Fairfield is not a member of SOPEC, but they are in our region and recently did their aggregation program. They're at 9.39, but they're not 100% renewable. So unfortunately, energy prices are going up across the board. This is a step for us to keep energy prices low in our aggregation program, but even if we are saving in comparison to the standard offer, our bills will be going up and that's just beyond, unfortunately, everybody's control right now, it feels like.
And I think it's important to note what you have said in a previous hearing is that how this had initiated was at a council retreat whenever we were trying to get away from the corruption
Energy Harbor.
Yes. Yeah, so this is the answer to that, which we know that they raise our rates in other ways. So, so yeah, it seems like a very good, much more democratic way to get our energy.
And, and when we last went through the energy aggregation, really looking for those suppliers that were committed to that transfer, you know, that, that, and, and the commitment to try to develop the capacity regionally is, is wonderful. So I want to really thank you Rena and everybody in the Environmental Commission and other staff for all the work that went into this and it's, it's awesome. I'm super excited.
Any other comments or questions?
May I add one more? Sorry.
You can.
So we do have two pieces of legislation. One is to join and one is to aggregate. The expectation is if we, like, we cannot join without aggregating, if that makes sense. So just to, I realize the membership vote is first.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll bring you up again and then you can just say what I just said. All right, all those in favor of the resolution indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimously approved. Please read the second.
A resolution approving the plan of governance, of operation and governance for the Sustainable Ohio Public Energy Council Electric Aggregation Program and for the purpose of jointly establishing and implementing an electric aggregation program.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Now Rena, you get to say.
No new information.
Okay. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Everybody understands what this one is? Okay. Is there further discussion? You ready to vote? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That resolution is also approved and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move to the third.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to waive the fees adopted in the fee ordinance for the fees on the right-of-way permit for a Juneteenth event at a cost not to exceed $438.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Jessica?
Staff report just said air. Good evening. One United care Brian Revere who spoke earlier has proposed a new event on Saturday, June 21st to celebrate Juneteenth. As part of this event proposal, there are the following associated costs. Road closure, $150, trash boxes, total of 24, parking spots, total of $264, and the total event cost for $438. One United has requested a total waiver of all fees for this inaugural event. City staff do want to inform council that events with road closures and no parking incur overtime cost. The city do place out the barricades, put out trash cans, collect extra waste, and place no parking signs. If no parking signs are ignored, city staff do assist with parking enforcement. However, this is the fourth request for a waiver of fee this year. One was for Music in the Parks, a 12-week event series. The other two were for large annual events using High Street. Per the council's request, staff are prepared to draft an application process for waiver fees for 2026 by late this summer. We currently do not have that process in place. Excuse me. I'm happy to answer any questions or Mr. Revere is here as well.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address the request? The resolution?
Hi, Anne Pure. I live on Dana Drive in Southern Knowles. Tonight I'm speaking as Secretary of the Oxford branch of the NAACP. So I'm speaking in support of Brian's request. Brian has worked with the NAACP for the last almost six months now to plan a three-day series of events in celebration of Juneteenth. We've been thrilled that Brian took the initiative to expand on the program that occurred last year, sponsored by Oxford Seniors and the NAACP involving a tour of Black history this year. That will focus on the Western College campus and particularly the history of Blacks and African-Americans on Western College. The three-day, three days of events that Brian has planned includes the Thursday night concert that's being cosponsored by Enjoy Oxford. So the city already has involved itself in cosponsoring the events. The other events that are being planned are really designed to do, I think, put into action, Sam, what you and Elena Ziccarelli proposed in that project, looking at ways that the city could be involved in honoring the history and culture of Black and African-American members of our community. So I think that this is very much related to the recommendations that Elena made in that plan and we were happy to be part of conversations about that. The NAACP has also collected donations primarily from our executive committee for the banner that you see up over High Street on Juneteenth and so we invite you to, to notice that. And we've worked with Brian to provide some very modest financial support, but Brian really has done a lot to put together the, the funding for the events and I encourage you all to attend those events on all three days. Really intergenerational, intercultural events that we are, are very pleased to help support. I'm also glad Jessica, that you mentioned the previous conversations about waiving fees and I'm glad that you're putting together a proposal, application for waiving of fees. I've listened to the conversations that have occurred previously about waiving fees for parking and I am interested in the conversation that's going to occur about this request because you're still working without a formal application process. So you still have a lot of discretion that will reflect a variety of your perspectives and I always look forward to those. So thank you, Brian. Thank you to everyone who's been involved in the planning and I hope to see you all at the events this Thursday, Friday, and Saturday.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to address this resolution? Okay. If any counselors have comments, I would really appreciate you giving the comments that Jessica's made about our that Jessica's made about our trying to get to a policy with some rationales for doing this. If you would talk about if you're in favor of it, why you're in favor of it, I think it would help the record. My concern is if we're going to have fees, that some people's got to pay them and some people don't. And the question is, who pays them and who doesn't? I also want to, for the record, let it be known that I'm a member of the NAACP, and so I am somewhat biased in that respect. I think this is an important event, but there are a lot of important events that come before us, and so I think it would be, it would behoove us to talk about the rationale that we want to use to either approve or deny the request.
I, I think the same things that I had said at the previous meetings. I mean, I was thinking about it after we had voted on the chamber's fee waiver, raver. I think I might be the only member, chamber member, maybe, up here, and I voted against it, but mainly because they're so large. And so when I think about a fee waiver, I look at that as a subsidy. And so the larger an organization is, the less inclined I feel to want to give them a subsidy. So I feel very differently about this. If anyone should get a subsidy, it should be someone who's starting out, who is small, who is like fundraising from the ground up, who is adding to culture, the culture of Oxford, and is encouraging exactly what we want to encourage within the city. So I feel the exact same way that I feel about all the other fee waivers that I have voted on, but this is very different because this is very small and it fits, it checks off many other boxes that we have set as a priority. So I personally am in favor of it, just as I would be more opposed if it was a much, say, whenever you get ginormous and there's 100,000 people, I would probably feel very differently. But for right now, it makes sense that you're just starting out, you're the kind of group that needs this help.
Yeah. I would also reflect, I mean, you know, speaking of people who care a lot about Oxford, Mr. Revere has come to several rec board meetings and, I mean, missed the window for budget season by that much, but still came every month. And there was kind of the transition period between when Casey left and Chad arrived. So, you know, there was time lost there and time that Mr. Revere had invested. So I feel very similarly. I think, you know, we weren't able to do the big ask and to me, reflecting the time and dedication of someone who is relatively new to our community and has really jumped in with both feet and wants to see some positive momentum for a cause that I think would really benefit Oxford, I think is great. So yeah, I would support this, but I will also say I am eager for our application process too, because like, yes, I very much support this. I also love working with the system because it takes a lot of that, you know, I think, Anne put it really well, our discretion changes and having a system makes it more equitable across the board.
Thank you. Want to help? Mike?
Yeah, I mean, I'm going to support this too. It's a lot to organize a three-day event basically on your own and try to fund it. So especially to do this, and we all know Oxford played a pretty important role in the civil rights movement, it was Freedom Summer, and anything that dovetails with that, and I think this event can only grow from here. So I'm totally in favor of waiving this.
Thank you. Jason?
Yeah, I think this is a holiday that deserves a massive amount of respect, and we should be throwing one of our biggest events for it and having someone from the public take on all this like word for a minor fee when we should be doing it or supporting it. Had you come earlier, maybe we could have helped with that. It's pretty easy, but I also look forward to having a full application process. And if we're worried about too many things coming, maybe we could put it in place prior to 2026, but I'm in full support of this.
Okay. Thank you.
I, I think because it's, it's an inaugural event, something that needs to be developed, I think a little seed, planting a little seed to help support it is a positive thing that we can do. I think it's also really important to collect data as well on the impact of your event, number of people who came, those kinds of things, because it helps to demonstrate to the city the value added beyond what we already have stated is the value added. So I want to encourage that as well. I know when we supported the chamber, it was large, but I think Kelly Riggs had sent us something afterwards that kind of talked about, sort of broke down the funds that were raised and the ways that they've engaged with the city. And of course, they have a bigger organization, they can do all of that, but anything that you can do to sort of demonstrate the impact would be helpful and important. But I do agree that, that we need a system, whether it's a pot that people have to apply for, and maybe with some clear guidelines for how far in advance they can apply, where it's clear in the future that they may not get all the funds they request, that we have the discretion to support partial requests. But this is so small and it's, it's new, so I'd like to see how it turns out.
Okay. Anybody else?
Well, I just looked at our comprehensive plan, which is the last time we took a barometer on the whole community, and we started out the plan with some guiding pillars, and number one was diversity, equity, inclusion. Our world somehow has turned on its head, and that's something that other people don't want to talk about, but we in Oxford continue to value it. And when I saw the banner above High Street, I was really very, very happy, and I'm very, very happy to support this in a $480 small way. It's a small contribution. I understand the issues, but.
Yeah, I think that because it's the inaugural event and it's seed money and it supports our comprehensive plan, I think those are reasons to support it. As you all know, I voted no the last time, but it was not their inaugural event and they were not in as great need, and I don't think that they met the same criteria, and I give you a lot of credit. I thank you from the bottom of my heart for all the work that you're doing, and I wish you the very best.
Can I say something else?
I will. If no one else.
Yeah, and I just want to say, staff has, you have a lot on your plate, and I know that, that maybe some education generally on how city supports public events could be helpful in the future, because I think sometimes, Mr. Revere, hearing you talking about your requests earlier on, I think maybe if the public was more aware of what the city can and can't do, you know, a lot of these events are not funded directly by the city in that way. And so it's, it's not a reflection of the city not being interested in this particular holiday or this particular event. You know, I know you all care and there are a lot of competing values, but I think some education on how these even come about could be helpful.
Are you ready to vote? All those in favor of the resolution indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is approved. Good luck. Okay. We'll move to the fourth resolution.
A resolution to adopt the City of Oxford Economic Development Strategic Plan.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt a resolution?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Jessica?
Good evening again. The Oxford Comprehensive Plan has a goal of a thriving and resilient year-round economy and an objective which asks the city to develop and economic development strategic plan. In May of 2024, we contracted with Red Tiger Investments to help us develop this plan. They then took a year-long comprehensive study of our historic, current, and future state of the Oxford economy. We had meetings with several stakeholders over many months throughout the past year and a half, including Oxford Community, permanent residents, student residents, Miami University administrators, business leaders, and economic professionals. This plan will provide a framework in, for planning and resource allocation towards meaningful, sustainable, and strategic growth. The Oxford Strategic Development, excuse me, Economic Development Strategic Plan is a tool for building the Oxford of tomorrow. This plan did go out for public comment for a period of 30 days and then was reviewed by the Ock Community Improvement Corporation on June 6th, and they do recommend it to city council for approval. And have you answered any questions?
Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Okay. Thank you. Counselors? Have any questions or comments?
It's a lot in here.
Yes, there is.
And I hope that we can do, I mean, I, I, I really want to, I'm so glad that we've done this. I think we've tried to do a little bit of this with the CIC in the past, and it's really nice to dial in some of our economic goals. I guess my comment is, is that one of the things that I know that we do well is quality of life, and so some of these are kind of very aspirational, like I hope we have this advanced air mobility, but I think that the plan also reiterates that our uptown is an economic driver, and so when we do quality of life, placemaking, those things are economic drivers too. So, yeah, I don't know about the part about the arena in here, but we'll let Miami figure that. So, but thank you to all involved.
As part of the CIC, I just want to thank Red Tiger and the CIC and Seth for putting all of this together. It's been an incredible amount of work, and I do agree that some of it is aspirational, but I think as I sit in what the direction of the state and the country are currently headed in and being very cognizant of the fact that the primary economic driver of Oxford is Miami University, it makes you feel a little itchy from time to time. So it's really important for us to diversify what Oxford looks like and where we're placed, what baskets are we putting our eggs in? And this to me, yes, I think some of it's aspirational, but I do, Red Tiger spent a lot of time in town, talking to folks and really thinking about what is it that makes Oxford special? What is it that brings people here and makes them, not makes them stay here, but makes people want to stay here? And this all to me is a, is an important piece of our progressive puzzle. When I think about all of the things that we want to do, all of the climate goals we have, all of the housing goals we have, having a more robust, full-time population gives us the tax base to be able to do that, especially, you know, with whatever is going to happen over the next few years. So this to me is really important. I very much support it, and another key piece there is too, encouraging us to have conversations with Miami and be more proactive and think about that strategic planning, which I thought was really smart. So yeah, just kudos to everybody involved on a really well-thought-out plan that reflects not only what Oxford can aspire to be, but where we, where we know we are already good. So yeah, thank you very much.
So here's where I'm coming from on this. I've actually gotten more communications about this than almost anything over the past several weeks, and it's primarily because of people who live in and around Western Knowles. And it was not until you take a really close look that you begin to understand, and I'm going to check my understanding, but if you look on pages seven and 43, they both have the same map. And then there's a map over Western Knowles, and it says transformational, residential, and mixed use. If you read the narrative, it's really talking about that area to the west of 732 as being residential, step-down residential to greater density as we get closer to 732. And Sam organized a very good charrette, I thought, on that property, and that was the conclusion, I think, of each one of the charrette proposals, was that it not have commercial on that side. And now we have the Oaks Trail going by, and I think the one thing that we don't want to have is commercial curb cuts across the Oaks Trail and where all of our children are walking to school and so forth. And as we've discussed previously, it's commercial curb cuts that have more of an impact than do residential curb cuts. And then if you look closely at that map, you realize that what they did was include something from the east side of 732, which is a commercially zoned property, which was discussed in the charrettes. If you were going to have commercial, that's where it would be. And so I think it was an odd thing to say that that area is where the, well, to assume that that's where that, the commercial might be, to include that as part of Western Knowles because nobody that I know of or have ever talked to in any context has ever thought of anything on the other side of the 732 as being part of Western Knowles. The only, when we talk about it, we talk about what we own as Western Knowles, which is housing and residential. So I want to support this, and I think it's a good plan, and I'm in favor of it, with all of our understanding that when they talk about commercial in the Western Knowles area, they're really talking about the part that is a park that is not in Western Knowles, that is in fact across the highway, near the bowling alley. And if there's a lot of disagreement, then, then I'll have to think about my vote, but otherwise, that makes sense to me. I don't think you would want to have commercial on that side now that we have the trail there. So that's my.
I was just looking back at the charrette. We had different opinion there, but many of those scenarios had some kind of mixed use, which included commercial.
Mr. Mayor, if I may. May I? Just to clarify, I think there might, in theory, it's not planned, right, but in theory, one of the ideas would be a very small-scale neighborhood business along the trail, similar to what you see like in Loveland or in Milford. We're talking like an ice cream shop or a little coffee shop or something like that that's right along the trail, but not a big commercial curb cut, no. But some minor, small business possibly, because that was part of the design charrette as well.
Well, the, the neighbors in Western Knowles that have lived there for many years are reading this as there's going to be a shopping center, and it's going to ruin our property values because it's going to become a tollgate, you know.
I have an idea. What if when we develop the request for proposals for 47 acres, we bring it to council before it's approved and then we can put it out for development?
I will vote for it, but I want to, I have all my colleagues understand that I'm voting with the understanding that there would be very little, if anything, commercial on the west side of 732.
Yeah, I would, I would reflect that in CIC and every iteration of this plan that I have seen, it has always been reflective of those conversations, that this would be a small trailside bonus, not a massive shopping center. And to Jessica's point too, it would defer to the plan that was established for the 47 acres. That would be the superseding document to this strategic plan.
Well, what's really going to be the document that shapes it is going to be our zoning. And so we're going to have to have, we're going to have to have conversations about what the zoning will be on that parcel that will be informed by this for sure, but that's going to be the real, the decision will come.
Well, it's already residential, and if you're talking about what a PUD would be, that's different than rezoning.
Well, we are, we're going through a comprehensive rezoning process of the entire community, which would involve looking at what that 47 acres should be in the future. And so that will be the time in which we can decide what the right land use mix ought to be.
Well, now you would make me want to vote no. And I think just as a, as a, as a point to make it clear, I will end up voting no, thanks to that comment. So are you ready to vote? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No.
Says the Western Knowles resident.
Hey, you know, there it is. Where are we now? That was.
That was D.
That was D.
Yep.
So now we're on E.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a settlement agreement pertaining to the Oxford Area Trails Multimodal Transportation Project Phase Five with Laura C. Osborne Trustee.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Jessica?
On April 15th, the city council passed an ordinance to appropriate certain real property interests owned by Laura C. Osborne Trustee to expand the Oxford Area Trail by adding a roadway trail for Phase Five of the multimodal transportation project. On May 5th, the city and Laura C. Osborne Trustee held mediation to discuss the appropriation for this project, and during that mediation, the city and Ms. Osborne came to an agreement for the city to pay $109,000 for a permanent easement to allow for this multimodal path alignment to be constructed on her land. The terms of the agreement are outlined as attached in Exhibit A, and we would recommend approval of this settlement.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Okay. Hearing that, counselors, any discussion?
I love when we can arrive at an amicable solution to something, and so thanks to all involved, starting with the property owner, but also staff for getting us to this place.
Okay. Thank you. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is adopted. We can read.
A resolution author. A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement of cooperation with Butler County, Ohio pursuant to the provisions of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded?
I missed the last meeting, I had to bring everything to this one. The City of Oxford has been a subrecipient of the Butler County Community Development Block Grant Program since 1998. This new cooperation, excuse me, cooperation agreement will extend this partnership for three years, from 2026 to 2028. Each year, the City of Oxford is invited to apply for CBPG funds. These funds typically range from $115,000 to $130,000 for the City of Oxford. Funds must go toward one of the national objectives listed by HUD, who administers the funds, and then it's approved by both the county commissioners and HUD before we get our funds, which is why it's literally almost an eighteen, it feels like an eighteen-month process before we get our money. I did outline some of the national objectives, but in past years, these funds have assisted with the ADA sidewalk improvements and playground repairs. They're typically used for capital expenditures because the reporting is very cumbersome. So, capital projects are our friends. But in the way this works is we bring forward our application outline, you endorse it. Once you endorse it, then we apply for these funds, and it is an annual grant program. Have you answered any questions?
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Hearing none, councilors, any comments or questions? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, resolution is adopted, and we'll move to the next one.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an option-to-purchase agreement with Empower Me Living.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
And it's been seconded. Jessica?
On May sixth, the Oxford City Council accepted the recommendation of the Housing Advisory Commission to work with Empower Me Living and Inclusive Housing Resources to develop sixteen units of affordable housing at 5234 Hester Road, some of which will serve adults with developmental delays. Empower Me Living has notified us of their intent to apply for the federal home loan program to assist with their development funding. In order to apply, they need to own or have an option to purchase the real estate. Listed in Exhibit A is an option to purchase contingent upon us negotiating a development agreement that council will then approve. This option to purchase provides us three months to work on this task with it. We can extend it, the deadline, by a few more months if necessary. Once the development agreement is drafted, we will return to council for approval and then bring forward an ordinance to actually sell the land. This option to purchase provides Empower Me Living an opportunity to apply for funding for affordable housing developments. Have you answered any questions?
Thank you very much. Something we're all in favor of. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Counselors? I think we're all in favor of it. All right.
Oh, I just have a question. Can you, sorry. Is there, what is the protection? Can you just elaborate, or maybe this will be decided in the future, as far as if they were to sell, so if they bought, purchased a property? Like, how do we try to protect that this will be affordable housing?
That will be in the development agreement, which is what we have three months to complete. So, this option to purchase is just an option, contingent on us figuring everything else out, but it allows them to apply for funding, which is, like, the deadline is next week.
And then, I'm assuming there could be some type of, we have the right of first refusal?
Yes, those are all things we're looking at.
If they stray from the intended purpose for affordable housing?
Yep, those are all things that we're looking at right now.
Okay, great.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, resolution is adopted, and we finally come to the last resolution.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for the Ohio Interscholastic Administrators Association Three-in-One Matching Grant Program for up to $40,000, with a required match of $16,345, for a total not to exceed $56,345 for the purchase of a tiny Mobile Robot Pro X Plus.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Chad, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. I would like to request that council replace the resolution currently on pages 209 and 210 in the council packet with the printed page that has been placed before you. After the submission of the published agenda, there was updated information we received from the grant provider. And in doing so, we learned that the grant is not being provided this year by the Ohio Interscholastic Administrators Association, but, in fact, the Bureau of Workers' Compensation.
So, we're changing the title?
The title, everything else remains unchanged.
Thank you. Why don't you go ahead and describe it?
Sure.
Get some public comment, if any, and then I will entertain a motion to substitute.
Sounds good, thank you. So, we recommend the council adopt the resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for a three-to-one matching grant, if awarded, would be toward the purchase of a tiny Mobile Robot Pro X Plus, which is a piece of equipment that will enhance the efficiency and precision of the marking on recreational athletic fields at the community park and other park locations. So, think of this as not unlike a Roomba for athletic playing fields. A proposal has been received for the purchase of the tiny Mobile Robot Pro X Plus, which is GPS-guided line-marking system designated to streamline field layout process, reduce labor hours. It's a cost-benefit analysis that has been completed by staff, and we're looking at a total cost savings of $7,500 annually on staff hours and material. So, this would be a cost-saving initiative, opportunity to be more efficient with time and get the fields more standardized.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Okay, councilors, I would first entertain a motion.
To substitute the paper version here that says the grants through the Bureau of Workers' Compensation for that, which is in our agenda.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it is substituted, is there any discussion? Sounds like a good deal to me. This is a resolution, so all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, resolution is adopted, and we'll move to ordinance's first reading.
An ordinance authorizing the purchase of perpetual easements on parcels numbers identified as 10SH1 and 10SH2 or around Gardenia Drive from the Laura C. Osborne Trust for the Oxford Area Trails Multimodal Transportation Project Phase Five.
Okay, thank you. Jessica?
This is simply the first reading of an ordinance to actually purchase the easement that I described earlier. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Because it's first reading, we're not having motions this time. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance? Counselors, have any questions or comments? Looks pretty good. All right, we'll move to the second reading.
An ordinance authorizing the tax budget for the year 2026 and directing that the same be transmitted to the Butler County Auditor.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
The ordinance, excuse me.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Heidi?
Good evening again, mayor and councilors. This is the second reading of the tax budget ordinance. I know a couple of you weren't here at the last meeting, when it was presented. Basically, again, it's just a preliminary estimate. We'll take the next, three months, three months of intensive preparation for the 2026.
Thank you to you and to your staff for all their work on this. We appreciate it. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address the ordinance? Okay, thank you. Counselors, discussion on the ordinance. Call the roll.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Petherich?
Yes.
Ms. Raghu?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Mayor Snape?
Yes, ordinance is adopted. We'll move now to announcements and communications, and we'll begin with Doug Elliott.
All right, thank you, Your Honor. On the water treatment plant softening improvements, we received the twenty-page comment letter from the Ohio EPA regarding our submitted plans for the water softening project. And our consultant, Strand and Associates, will be working with staff and I to respond to those comments and their request for more information, hopefully within the next week or so. If possible, we hope to let this project out by the end of July, but we'll see. The current estimate of the project is 18.9 million. And of course, as you know, currently, the City of Oxford has very hard water. We have a hardness of 350 milligrams per liter, and hardness is usually measured by the amount of calcium carbonate in the water. So, the city will be utilizing membrane softening, reverse osmosis, to achieve a hardness of 120 to 140 milligrams per liter. This new treat, excuse me, this new treatment process, when completed, will save customers the expense of having to buy and maintain their own softening system. So, good news for the city, and like I said earlier, a lot of work for us to do to review those comments and respond, along with our consulting engineer. And then, once we do let it out, of course, we'll have to decide on the financing and how we're going to approach that. And I'm hopeful that we can get some loan forgiveness and possibly low interest on that project. So, another thing that I want to share with you, I always share our municipal income tax collection. As you know, we contract with RITA, the Regional Income Tax Agency, to administer our local income tax. They administer the income tax for over 422 Ohio jurisdictions now. So, this service has proven to be very effective and efficient in the collection and administration of the city's income tax. In 2024, RITA collected just over $11 million total for the general and fire EMS fund. As you know, we have a quarter of a percent that goes to the fire EMS fund. So, they collected just over $11 million in 2024, and the administrative cost was $102,478. So, this cost represented just under 1% of the city's collection total. Since the agreement with RITA calls for a 3% retainage, the city will receive a refund amount of $227,341. And we'll be depositing that in the general and the fire EMS funds. As you know, there's a lot going on in the state legislature, especially as it deals with property taxes. And I shared with the city council that I did send a letter, a written opponent testimony on basically House Bill 335, the so-called Property Tax Relief Now Act. This act proposes to eliminate unvoted inside millage for local governments, including municipalities. This millage, inside millage, has been a long-serving revenue source for the City of Oxford. It supports essential services such as police, fire, EMS, street maintenance and snow removal, parks and recreation, community development and administration. For the City of Oxford, the loss of inside millage would result in a reduction of approximately 1.8 million in annual funding, or 12.35% of our general fund revenues in 2024. So, this would jeopardize our ability to maintain current service levels without asking voters for new taxes or making difficult service cuts. You know, I suggested that, seems like everybody is complaining, but nobody's offering solutions except to eliminate things. As you know, there's also a bill to eliminate replacement property tax levies. And there's also a petition for a constitutional amendment to eliminate all property taxes, which would be like, you know, jumping off the cliff and hoping somebody catches you. I mean, it just doesn't make sense. And so, you know, I suggested that they consider a property tax circuit breaker. And this circuit breaker would be focused on those in need. And, you know, I think it makes a lot of sense because, you know, we have a homestead exemption now, which is an across-the-board reduction. And, you know, folks that are in need need to be helped, for sure. And I think a property tax circuit breaker would do that. So, you know, we'll continue to watch things at the legislature, state legislature. There are other bills still dealing with the short-term rental regulations and also one dealing with the host community adult marijuana tax. And, you know, my fear is that one of these proposals might end up in the budget for the next two years, and so, we'll see what happens. But, you know, I will follow them closely and keep you posted. That's all I have this evening, Your Honor, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mike, go for it tonight, please. Chief?
Thank you. Just wanted to let you know that this weekend, Respectful Law Camp will be in town. So, that's an entity of the Butler County Police Chiefs Association. And so, you'll see cars and cruisers from all over in town. They'll travel from Miami University over Butler Tech. They'll go out to the community park one night, but there, you may see, they may be marching, they maybe have their lights and stuff going. But there's no emergency, that's just us participating in this camp. We actually have just a minor role in that now, even though we were the champions, the founder, and the very heavily involved over the years. But you will see those other agencies out participating in that. I wanted to take a minute, since council had the opportunity, I wanted to also thank Sean Scott. Back in 2020, I had a very strained relationship with the Miami student, to the point where I just wouldn't take their interviews, because I felt their reporting was very, very bad. Sean Scott restored my faith in them when he came on board, and he very balanced as he did it. We always took his interviews, because we always knew he would be fair in how he represented the police department. So, I just want to thank Sean, and, you know, he continued to grow that through the Oxford Free Press with us as well. So, and wish him luck in Maine. And then, Thursday, on Juneteenth, that national holiday, a reminder that parking is free, so you don't have to feed your meat.
Okay. Always appreciate it. Heidi? Okay. Chief?
Hi, sir.
Okay, Jeff?
I'm here.
Okay. Well, we have Houston. Do you have any comments?
Chris?
He said pass.
Oh, that's, I'm sorry, that shows how good my eyesight is.
She's here to learn more about me.
All right, that was good.
In the interest of time, I.
Okay, Sam? Okay.
You heard me a lot. Very quickly, a huge thank you to Ashley Keaton, who's pulled together our 2024 annual report. It is in, gone to print, so it will be posted online probably tomorrow, and then a social campaign will go out about it. This is a visually-driven annual report with longer content than available online. So, thank you to Ashley for getting this together for us.
Thank you. Heather?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay. Chris?
I don't have anything.
Mike?
Just a quick update from the OKI. Regional Council of Governments, Oxford, along with Middletown, the Butler Regional Airport, and Lungen Airport have been selected to be as part of a pilot study for them. Actually, they've hired a consultant. They're looking ahead in the future, as OKI tends to do. Vertical takeoff and landing aircraft are about to be certified by the FAA, and they feel that we will be an airport that will see such aircraft as one, whether it's part of research or whether it's part of regular travel. So, they've hired a consultant to look at our airports and evaluate what will be needed to service these aircraft and then make recommendations.
Okay, thank you. Ellis?
Yes, I already went through a lot of the things that I was going to say earlier in the meeting. But I will say, again, rough, rough weekend for violence in the U.S., particularly political violence. And the more we learned about the shooting in Minnesota, it became really unnerving. And then, my friends looked at me, and they said, "You sure you still want to do this, buddy?" And I said, "Yeah, I think Oxford's fine." But the parting words that Lieutenant Fanning gave us immediately sprang to mind because the person who perpetrated the shooting impersonated an officer. And we are so lucky to live in a small town where we can know every single one of the officers, who, who work in our town, unless we misidentify them. But I, so that was my immediate thought. I was like, wow, that is so relevant. So, just, I think. So just, I think, one, that's a thing that has been on my to-do list for forever, and I know JJ knows that I, it's at the top of every council agenda notes that I have. It says, "Schedule a ride-along." So it just, I, right, yeah. So it just reignited the fact that, you know, we, we should have a strong relationship with our police department. We should know who's knocking on our doors, not just for public safety, for our safety, but for, you know, community betterment and strengthening those relationships. So, yeah, not, not a super fun time this weekend to think about being a public-facing, public-serving member of, of city government, but I stand by what I do and why I do it, and the fact that we're really lucky to live in our community. And I think that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up. And this is something that, always thinking about proactive ways of how we can protect privacy and safety. And it was something I'd asked, I think, in my first year of council of, why do we have so much personal information on the website? Because I was getting veterinary client, when I know that it's, I believe it's in our charter, or it might be in Ohio Vice Code. But I was having clients, like veterinary clients, call me in the middle of the night because they found my phone number on our website. And I was like, this has got to go. And so, when I look at the privacy of police officers, judges, it's for safety that that is restricted. And the lawmakers who were shot and killed, that information was brought up from, you know, they purchased this data. Now ours, you can literally just Google us and find our address. And so I would ask, you know, what can we do to look at the privacy that we don't, one of us does not need to be hurt or killed before we make a change, just like they did for judges, like, oh, maybe we should prevent having their public information out there. So I think that that is something important to look into. Is it the charter, or is it?
No, it's, it's just the policy. I mean, obviously, in this day and age, you can get that information off the internet. I mean, for example, go to the Board of Elections with your name, and I can get your address. And if you've registered for a party, I can get that. So, you know, I think we took some information off, like phone numbers.
Yeah, and our addresses are still there.
It's, it's.
But your addresses are.
Yeah, it's something we have control over to just be a little proactive. Yeah, there's, the information's out there, but we don't need to have it on our website.
Okay, we can take that off. I mean, that's easy to do, you know, it's, and I understand that. I mean, like I said, if someone really wants to find out, they can figure it out, and we can certainly take it off. Part of it, too, is to demonstrate that you're residents of the community, you know, it's one of the requirements in our charter. And so, but it's always been the practice in every city I've been in to put the address and the phone number, and, and the city email address in there. We do not put on your private email address. So, but we can, if the council desires that, we can drop your address and just have your name on there.
Yeah, and, and you'll have the city email.
And the city email address.
Or postal address. I mean, there's no reason we couldn't receive mail at the city building.
Yeah.
That's the rest of the house.
Does anybody mail anything anymore, though?
No, but I did have somebody show up at my house unannounced.
The same could be said, though, for phone numbers, too. I've seen where there's a dedicated city number so that individual counselors can get messages and then respond that manner. But I do want to add, Ohio's Sunshine Law does not give elected officials and other staff members the same protections as law enforcement. Law enforcement, there are blanket waivers about personal identifiers, et cetera, et cetera, that you do not have the same benefit.
Yeah, and it makes sense that police officers should have that privacy for their safety. And I, I think that especially as we're worried about increasing political violence in a very strange time, we should try to do what we can to protect the people that live in the city and are brave enough to, you know, throw their name in the ring. And I wanted to say also, thank you, Sean, so much. I mean, you're, yes, you're skilled, you're talented, you're wonderful. You could be doing anything. You could be doing things that pay you so much more, that have so much more glory, that people are not hounding you and personally attacking you. You could do that, but you're not. You're choosing to do this very brave, very noble thing that is very valuable. So, thank you for that. And your whole career, like, it's just, you're so amazing. Very mad you're leaving, but, congrats. And then also for, we have Jim here, Jim Bench, who's running for council this coming year. And we're so lucky to have someone with his expertise that is willing to be here on his birthday to watch the council, so, and to devote yourself to this next, you know, this, it's just, thank you so much. And then to Ann, who is here all the time, you have, I know it's not your birthday, I don't think.
Two ways, two ways.
Yeah, and you'll probably be here, right? So Tuesday, so. But thank you so much for everything you do, for housing, for racial equality, everything. Like, I just see this trifecta of journalism, public servant, and then nonprofit, and how beautiful it is that you're sitting right there. So, thank you so much. And then I also wanted to share, because we all have a role to play whenever we see something that just doesn't quite feel right. And so if you, if you encounter unmarked, and like, people are not identifying themselves, abducting other people, it'll be really important to do what you can to try to protect them, talking about ICE. So whatever that might look like, we see lots of examples, people forming human chains, people doing lots of things. So do whatever seems that, I think it's important to think about what your role will look like if and when that time comes, because it might. So, and then one of the most beautiful things I, I saw or helpful would be pulling your phone out, videoing, and then making sure you're asking the person who's getting abducted what their name is, various other pertinent information so that you can try to protect them, report them to a criminal immigration helpline, so that they can get them in touch with attorneys. So that number is 212-725-6422. There might be others, but I think it's important for us to make sure we all have a role to play all the time. It doesn't just stop at our meetings. So, so thank you to everyone.
Thank you. Amber?
You know, I was thinking, reflecting on a, a passage in the Bible that talks about one body but many parts, in that, you know, the eye cannot say to the foot, "I don't need you," or the hand cannot say to this part, "I don't need you," that, that everything works in concert to, to function fully. And that, that's a, a parable or, or an example that's used to talk about the church, but I think it can and should apply to our society generally. We need each other, and we form different functions, but together, we're stronger than any individual part. And that's true for people who were born and raised here many generations, people who are immigrants. It's true for, for law enforcement and people who want to oversee law enforcement. We need all of us to, to really thrive. And I've kind of been humbled thinking about some of the people that I knew here at Miami during President Trump's first administration, who were from Muslim-majority countries, where there was a ban, where they didn't go back to bury family members or go to weddings because they weren't sure if they were going to be let back in. And being from a mixed family, where I've, my whole family are Canadian citizens, and I'm the only one who's a US citizen, but I have siblings in the US with green cards. You know, we did not have a reunion for my father's 80th birthday this year, because my family in the US didn't feel good about going to Canada and coming back, because they weren't sure if there was a parking or speeding ticket that might be used to, to prevent them from coming back. And, and so, you know, we hear, first it's these people, and I didn't say anything, or, you know, and then it's us. And I wonder if the circle is tightening around anyone here yet enough for us to really speak out and realize that we are all in danger when due process and civil liberties are, are bridged. And, you know, my parents came to visit me, and they just left, actually, yesterday, had a good cry after they left, because I see them getting older and, and I think about all that they've done for, for me and my family. And they're worried about me, too, running, running for council again. And I've told them that it's going to be okay, because they raised me to step up, you know, and to be a civil servant in many ways. I'm grateful for the people who planned the No Kings protest. I'm grateful for the law enforcement that was circling around and, and just checking on us to make sure we were okay. I wanted the community to know that we are in this room, where our law enforcement offers, officers take their oath. And we hear them say that they are going to uphold the Constitution of Ohio and the United States, very similar to the oath that we take. But yesterday, as I was walking to my car from Cofena, a man in a big truck, and I don't usually walk around with my phone, ready to record things, but he was at a stoplight, and I was about to cross, and my, my light turned red. So we were there, looking at each other, and I kind of smiled at him. And when his light turned green and he started driving, he leaned, he leaned forward because he was passing me, but he wanted to make sure that I could see him. And he did the, the white power symbol, and he wanted to make sure I saw that. And, you know, when I told my husband, and he looked it up online to make sure, "This is what you saw?" I'm like, "Yeah, that's what I saw." You know, I could take a picture of the license plate, but it's my word against his, and, and they're cowards, and they always do it when they're driving by and, and when you're alone. But that exists, and I'd like to say that that's not who we are, but it is kind of part of who we are, because, because it happens. But we can choose not to be that as individuals and as a community. And I'm grateful to, to live in a community where, by and large, I think we are striving to be, to be better human beings than that.
Jason?
Thank you for that, and everybody's words are great. I'm not going to repeat them, but I appreciate them. I just wanted to add that this night started out for us with a work session where we went over so many things that our city staff is doing and is going to do. And it is amazing, and I can't believe you're doing it all. It's crazy, but I'm very appreciative, and we live in a great city, and it's because of you. Thanks.
Well, just picking up from Jason, what I also want to recognize was that it's kind of a, we're changing how we do our process, you know, at the request of council, that we now have much more robust visioning sessions in January that then feed some staff analysis. Not everything is going to filter out of that. But then we can have this conversation in June, before the budget is, before the budget is balanced and baked, so that we can have a conversation. Because I, you know, I think about budgets, like, everything we do should be democratic. And, and so we're moving in a direction of making a demo, but democracy means tough choices about some things we have money for and some things we don't. So, yeah, I wanted to also just thank the organizers for the No Kings. It was really a wonderful day, the largest single protest in the history of the United States. But I did also really.
Well, in the history of Oxford.
Yeah, well, in the history of Oxford, but, you know, not, but I also did really recognize that I appreciated the, the very light touch that the Oxford Police Department took, which is part of how we're going to get to a different place where we, you know, so it was, there was no pretext for anything other than peaceful demonstration, and everybody was on their best behavior. So thank you for that.
Okay, thank you very much. I was not here, and the city manager was not here, and Jessica was not here last meeting, because we went to the International Town Gown Association meeting in Kent, Ohio. It was hosted by Kent and Kent State University. I just want to report that it was a meaningful conference to me, and I was surprised how interested I was in every one of the sessions that I attended. None more interesting than the one led by Jessica Green. And I just want to say, she represented our community so well in talking about what we did. And the chief was there to talk about it from his perspective. I just think that our city represented itself very well among a lot of college communities, really internationally. There were people there from other countries, and I think they appreciated what we have here. Jessica also was part of a, a general session that she followed somebody who was so dynamic and great in his presentation, and everybody's going, "Oh, poor Jessica, she has to follow that." She did a great job. And she, everybody was talking about it later, how great she was. And so I just want everybody to know that we're well-represented in, in that arena. I also wanted to comment on the same things about the, having our addresses on the, on the website. And it's one of the reasons I'm so much in favor of the barricade system that we talked about earlier in our work session, because we need to be proactive. Because things can happen in our little town, even if we, I mean, I have friends on both sides of the political spectrum. I love them all. We tend to get along really well in this community. But somebody who is not right in their mind can decide that this is where they want to have a, you know, drive their car into a crowd on one of our festivals, and I would like us to be prepared. I appreciate the police department and the city staff in many ways, but one of which is, I noticed the last time they were parking vehicles to prevent that from happening. But I think the barricade system makes a lot of sense. I also want to echo the comment that was made and that I make on pretty much a regular basis when I get the opportunity, and that is that we are a fortunate community to have such talented city staff who work long hours and do such great work. And, I mean, there's not a weak link in the group. I think you all do such a great job. And the police department, the fire department, you're all really well-appreciated, even if I don't always recognize. I apologize. But in any case, I would entertain a mo, oh, by the way, I appreciate, Jim, that this is your birthday and you're spending it here, because tomorrow's my birthday and I'm not going to be here. All right, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.